To the Pasadena Humane Society, where's Michelle? There you are in the back. Michelle runs this place along with others and we're super grateful to be here. And we do have raffle items at the end. You may get a puppy or a kitten, who knows?
I don't think my dog would like that.
But you do a great job for the Pasadena community and actually for a number of other cities. Our Humane Society serves as a number of the other surrounding cities, so it's great to be here. We're going to be talking mostly about the Central District specific plan tonight. So for those of you policy wonks like me, you know, who enjoy speaking about zoning and land use, which is a huge percentage of time, energy, and resources at City Hall, you know, when it comes down to it. One of the most important things our city does for us all is regulate the way that we use and occupy land, what's built and what's not built. I'm reading a book right now about parking, one of my favorite topics. Seriously, it's, you know, you'd be amazed at some of the statistics around parking, you know. I think there's like 25 times the parking spaces in the U.S. than there are cars, you know, and I think 7% of parking spaces are occupied at any given time, right? It's a big issue for cities and communities. And I sometimes joke with all that we have going on in Pasadena that you could actually sleep through every meeting and still be thought a genius if you just woke up once an hour, leaned into the microphone and said, "What about parking?", and then went back to sleep. Because truly, every issue that we deal with seems somehow to come back to transportation, parking, and of course, it relates to things like public safety, you know, our great fire department, many of whose members are here tonight, and I want to be sure to give them a shout out. Can we just thank our fire department chief Augustine and his firefighters? And our great police department is here as well, and I want to give them a shout out as well. Thank you very much. And, you know, we're dealing with climate change issues now as well, and so there's a big push to have TOD, Transit Oriented Development, where we allow for more density around transit locations, gold line stops and the like, so very important stuff. But before we get to that, I just wanted to cover a couple of things. Make sure you fill out a card, if you would, so that we can keep in touch, and also for the raffle later. We've had some big updates in the city, and the first one I want to give a huge shout out to is that the PUSD School Board, as you may have heard, voted to award San Rafael Elementary School $35 million of Measure O funding, which will provide the capital improvements that are needed to keep San Rafael school open, which is what we've been advocating for a long time. It's the last public school in West Pasadena, in my council district, which covers not just West Pasadena, but a big swath in the middle of the city, around Old Pasadena, Convention Center, the Civic Auditorium. Our district's kind of like a T turned on the side, if you think about it, and we used to have, I think, six elementary schools in that district, and now we have one that is still open, and that's San Rafael. We have Linda Vista, which is still there, but it's closed, and we're using that as a park and a preschool. And the future there is a little uncertain, but we were so grateful. It was a four to three vote, and our school board member who represents our area, Yara Malasquez, was a real champion and a leader, and I'm deeply grateful to her for that. Not so grateful to the three that voted against it, but at the end of the day, it didn't matter. It's kind of reminded, for those of us old enough, remember when it was Gerald Ford to New York, dropped dead in terms of aid or something back in the 70s, I think it was. But in any event, four votes in favor was all we needed, and the school's going to stay open and be improved, which is great. As you know, the 7-10 step occupies a lot of our efforts these days in terms of revisioning that, and we're slowly making progress. I think we're still, you know, I'd like to think we're at the end of the beginning, as Churchill said, you know, not the beginning of the end, but long, long process. We have a working group that the city has appointed, and in our district, we've appointed a West Pasadena working group, Lynn Sullivan is a member, and others. And we've started meetings there just so that our district in particular will take advantage of the expertise and wisdom that we have. We had fully as many applicants for the citywide group as the rest of the city did. So about half the applicants were from West Pasadena, so the idea was, let's make use of that expertise and commitment and have our own group meetings. So there'll be another meeting coming up here this weekend. And, you know, we're looking at about a three-year just visioning process before we're anywhere near sort of shovel-ready projects. A related issue that we've been working on, of course, is the Caltrans houses. So there are 105 houses that Caltrans owns by virtue of their prior intent to have a freeway project there, and they're now beginning this process of repatriating, reconvening, relinquishing those homes under a complicated formula. And the city is now studying the purchase and then moving forward with the purchase of the first 17 unoccupied homes. So the homes that are unoccupied, the city has sort of the first right to be able to acquire those, subject to certain conditions, and we're in that process now. And we'll have some comprehensive proposal to have some affordable housing, sell some of the homes for market price, and then use those proceeds for affordable housing elsewhere in the city. But I'm also committed to keeping the nonprofit parcels protected and in the hands of those nonprofits like Sequoia, Ronald McDonald House, Waverly Farm, you know, it's a long list like that. So we're doing charter reform, which is something we do from time to time at the city level in terms of, you know, we are a charter city, so sort of our constitution, if you will, is the city charter, and the charter does need to be, you know, amended and revised from time to time. And we've given, we've appointed a task force now and given them a number of topics, including city council, vacancy appointment process, special elections, term limits, campaign finance reform, and a number of other topics. So we'll make sure that you hear about those meetings as they come forward and you're given the opportunity to weigh in if you have views about all of those things or any of them. We're still working on the Colorado Street Bridge project. We had a lengthy hearing at the Public Safety Committee on which I sit here just in the last couple of weeks, and we looked at the three sort of staff-preferred vertical barriers to present, prevent future suicides on the bridge. And my view, and I think the view of the, I know the mayor shared this view, and I think others as well, that none of them really is optimal. And so I would like to see us study other, maybe multimodal approaches, maybe look at nets underneath. Patrols were mentioned as a way to try to address this. It's really difficult. We definitely have to elevate human safety and try to shake this sort of brand that the bridge has come to be known as, Suicide Bridge. And there are analogs, you know, Golden Gate Bridge in San Francisco just installed a netting system after like decades of studying it and debating it and all that. So I don't think that's fully baked yet, and we'll continue to follow that closely and keep you posted. So we are hoping against hope that the 134 Overpass Caltrans project that has bedeviled so many of us as we try to get on and off the freeway, even for local trips, is, you know, on track and making progress. It seems like they're pretty much done with the north side now. You can see that that lane's mostly reopened, and on the south side, we're hopeful that that'll be over soon. Caltrans has only told us that we're making progress and hope to be on track to complete this by the spring of next year. So it's been a burden and a sacrifice, I know. So with that, I want to turn to our agenda, and then we'll have time at the end for questions from me or our staff that's here. And we have two of our most important land use and zoning management-level folks here. We have our Planning Department Director, Jennifer Page, who's terrific. I've worked closely with Jennifer for a long, long time. She took over from David Reyes when David was named Assistant City Manager and hasn't missed a step. And Principal Planner Anita Serna is here as well, and we're really grateful to you all. So come on up, and I'll give you the lectern, and yes, let's give them a West Pasadena welcome. Thank you.
Thank you to Councilmember Madison, and thank you for having us tonight. If you would have had the fire chief and the police chief on the invitation, we probably have twice as many people here. But I appreciate you coming because it's not always exciting to talk about land use and planning, but I think as Councilmember Madison described, it's really important, it affects your life every day, it's your surrounding environment that you see and you live with. We're passionate about it in the Planning Department, so we're excited to be able to present to you the Central District specific plan tonight. We did a pared-down version of the presentation that we've made at the Planning Commission and the City Council, and we tried to focus a little bit more specifically on District Six as well. And, you know, we've been working on the specific plan update since 2018. We were directed by the council to update eight specific plans in 2018, and it's a monumental task. It's something that we have a whole section of planners dedicated to working on full-time. We're about midway through that update right now. When we finished the Central District specific plan, we reached that halfway mark, so that was a good achievement. And the Central District in terms of areas is our largest plan. So Anita's going to walk you through some of the details of the plan, but one of the things that we heard throughout the Central District specific plan that was a little bit different than what we've been hearing in some of the others is to remember that the Central District is a place where people live. It's not just a place for businesses and retail and shopping. You know, we know that it's our densest area in town, it's where we have our tallest buildings, it's where we have the greatest mix of uses, but it's also a place where a lot of people live, and it's a place where we've been intentionally concentrating growth. And I think the community members that live in the Central District are coming out and saying, you know, "Don't forget that we need sidewalks that are comfortable for us to walk on, and we want street trees, and we want places to gather, and we want open spaces, and remember that there are people here every day and not just during the business day." And so we really heard that, I think, going through this process, and I think that's reflected in some of the changes that you'll see in this updated version of the plan. The last version of the plan was done in 2004, so it's about 20 years old. And I think the thinking 20 years ago was a lot about an urban environment, and we would call it the urban edge. You would bring buildings out to the street and embrace urbanism, and we realized that, you know, you can have an urban environment but still have it be a place that's friendly for people to visit and for people to live in, and that means some adjustment when it comes to climate change and sustainability and just the way people use their spaces. And also, coming out of COVID, we realized that people live differently and need different places to gather and to live. And so some of that was really reflected in the latest version of the specific plan. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Anita. She'll walk you through the plan and where available to answer any questions that you might have afterwards.
Good evening, thank you. I'm really excited to be here. My name is Anita Serna, Principal Planner with the Planning Department. And so I was invited tonight to present on the recently adopted Central District specific plan. And so I'll start off with a little bit of background information. As Director Page mentioned, the Central District specific plan is the largest specific plan in the city. It's approximately 1.25 square miles. It includes the Civic Center, Old Pasadena, Playhouse Village, and South Lake. There are also very numerous historic resources and distinct neighborhoods in the area. There are four metro stations within walking distance of the Central District specific plan area. You have the Del Mar, North Lake, Memorial Park, and Fillmore stations. And the Central District specific plan borders the East Colorado specific plan on the east and the South River specific plan just south of Del Mar. And so on the screen here, you see a map of the Central District specific plan area relative to other specific plan areas and the city in general. The R-Pasadena was a program that was initiated by the City Council in 2018 to implement the 2015 general plan. Essentially, the general plan is the blueprint for how the city should grow and how it should manage its resources. And so in 2018, the City Council directed the Plan Department to begin the process to update its specific plans. So there's a total of eight specific plans that are being updated as part of this process, including the Central District specific plan. The first specific plan that was updated was the Lincoln Avenue specific plan, which was adopted by the City Council in 2021. That was followed by the East Colorado plan in 2022 and the South River specific plan. And just in October of this year, the Central District specific plan was adopted by the City Council. And on the map here, you see the eight specific plans. So getting into the specifics of what the Central District specific plan is, and so a little bit in terms of what a specific plan is, a specific plan for the city, it's basically a tool that we use to regulate land use, development, and how we use the resources within the city. And so in the next few slides, you'll see how we use a specific plan to develop the city. For Central District, as any particular area, there's a vision, and this vision statement represents a little bit of what is included in the general plan, as well as feedback that we receive from the community throughout the engagement process. And so I'll read the vision. "The Central District will build upon its strengths as Pasadena's vibrant downtown, providing diverse economic, civic, cultural, entertainment, and residential opportunities. The district will be a place to work, shop, live, play, and raise a family, with convenient access by foot, bicycle, assistive device, and transit, as well as by car. Physical and economic growth will support this role and respect the numerous resources of historical and cultural significance that contribute to the district's unique identity." So this vision statement that was, we took from the general plan and was reshaped and grown as part of the outreach process, and we use this vision to help guide the preparation of the specific plan update for Central District. So we really use this to guide the type of developments that we wanted to see moving forward. In terms of the boundaries of the specific plan area, it's bounded by Corson Street to the north, Pasadena Avenue to the west, Del Mar and California Boulevard to the south, and Mentoran-Wilson Avenue to the east. The portion of south of Del Mar, I would like to point out that that area was included originally in the Central District specific plan, but as we updated the specific plans, that particular area was, is now incorporated into the South River specific plan. So just want to point that out. In terms of which areas are within Council District Six, the map highlights the area generally south of Colorado and west of Los Robles as areas that are in the Central District specific plan within Council District Six. The Central District specific plan organizes the vision and the goals and policies that are included in that document by subarea. So there are a number of subareas within Central District, but the subareas that are specific and that are within Central District, Council District Six include Old Pasadena, Civic Center, DeLacy, Arroyo Del Mar, and the in-town residential neighborhood. So those are the areas that are within District Six. The next few slides highlight a few of the development and design standards that are in the Central District specific plan. "The intent or the objective of the standards that are included in this specific plan are intended to support new housing opportunities near transit, employment, and services. One of the objectives was to require appropriate high transitions to residential neighborhoods and designated historic resources." You know, the Central District specific has many historic resources, and so we wanted to make sure that any new development provided appropriate transitions to that particular use or building. Another objective of the plan was, again, to provide appropriate transitions, not only within private and private development, but also that there would be appropriate transitions between the private realm, which is generally the building, and the public realm, which is the sidewalk space, and how those two relate. A key objective was to increase sidewalk widths throughout the Central District specific plan, so as new development comes in, they would have to provide wider sidewalks. And this was done intentionally in order to provide wider space to pedestrians, to provide spaces for parkways, to provide spaces for tree trees, and to provide space for other amenities or other resources such as infiltration and groundwater capture. Another objective of the plan was to encourage change of use and adaptive reuse of existing buildings, to promote a more efficient use of parking spaces, and reduce the visual impacts of parking. Last but not least, another key objective of the plan was to provide a variety of usable, functional, and accessible open spaces for residents, for the commercial tenants, and the public to gather and recreate. Those are the objectives of the specific plan, and then you'll see in the next few slides how that translates, how that's implemented through the various development standards. So the first one is residential density, and we measure density by what's typically known as dwelling units per acre. In general, most of Central District is already zoned for multifamily use at a density of 87 dwelling units per acre. What that means within Central District, that's kind of where you are allowed the most dense type of residential development in Central District. As part of the new specific plan that was recently adopted by the City Council, we made a few changes. One of them was to allow housing along the northern portion of Lake Avenue, where you see the office buildings, and that's generally between Corson and Colorado Boulevard. So currently, in the previous 2004 plan, housing was not an allowable use. What we heard from the community and the commission and council was that there was a need to allow housing near transit and employment, and so as part of this update process, housing would be allowed on Lake Avenue, the northern portion between Corson and Colorado at 87 dwelling units per acre. Everywhere else, the density generally remained the same. In a few areas, the density increased slightly, so it went from 60 to 87 dwelling units per acre. Those, some few examples was the DeLacy area and the area on Arroyo, south of Bellevue. That area went from 60 to 87, which is the areas that are shown in blue on the map. In a few other areas, the density actually decreased from 87 to 64 dwelling units per acre. And that was, for example, on the east side of Arroyo, south of Cordova Street, which is the area shown in pink on the map. There was also a decrease in density on the southwest corner of Los Robles and Cordova, and so that area is also shown in pink on the map. So we kind of adjusted densities. Generally, the rule of thumb was to allow density near transit along the major corridors and to, in areas where we were able to lower the density to provide a transition from some of the residential neighborhoods. So that was the intent, and that was reflected in the adopted plan. Another key development tool or factor is height limits. Currently, most of the taller buildings are located on Colorado Boulevard and Lake Avenue, so that's where you see the tallest buildings today. In the new plan, we're keeping that generally, that trend in terms of where the tallest buildings go, pretty much the same. We did hear from the community this need to make sure that when new development comes in, that they provide some transitions. Specifically, we heard that along Green Street, because of the mature ficus trees and the need to maintain those trees there, that we needed to figure out a way of ensuring that new development did not compete or conflict with the ficus trees. So one of the new development standards that's included in Central is that buildings along Green Street, the frontage of the building would be limited to 20 feet. And then if they wanted to go any taller than that, that they would have to step back the building eight feet, and then they can bump up the building. And that way was to carve out specifically where we measured where the canopy kind of grows and where it matures. And so we, that was at 20 feet, and so I think by making that very important regulation in a new plan would allow new development to allow these ficus trees to continue to grow and thrive. So that was one key tool or standard that was included. Another portion was that there's many historic resources in Central District, and so we wanted to make sure that any new development adjacent to a historic, designated historic resource, that there would be appropriate transitions, not only with regards to height, but also setbacks. And so that was included in the new Central District specific plan as well. And so the map that you see on the screen are the height limits for Central District. And by the way, the area that's within the FUSIA boundary, that's the, I mean, the District Six area. Moving on to building setbacks. Currently, in the 2004 plan, zero setback is the rule. So if you're a residential, I mean, if you're a commercial or mixed-use project, you don't need to provide a building setback, so you can be right at the property line. Within Old Pasadena, you have to be at the property line, you can't push it back. What we heard throughout the process was that we needed more space along the public realm. We needed more space for outdoor dining, for some landscaping, just more space in general. And so what this new specific plan does is establishes a minimum of five-foot setback throughout most of the Central District specific plan, with the exception of within Old Pasadena and some of the historic neighborhoods. Those will still continue to allow zero-foot setback because the intent is that those buildings are not going to go away, those are historic. So it's, you know, keeping a zero-foot setback makes sense, but everyone, everywhere else, there's a five-foot minimum setback. And again, the intent was to provide space for outdoor dining, for landscaping, to push the, as Director Page mentioned, push the building edge a little bit further back and provide some more space. In addition to pushing the building back five feet, we also expanded the sidewalk with requirements. Currently, in the 2004 Central District plan, only certain streets have minimum sidewalk width requirements. Those are Colorado and Lake Avenue, and a few other streets have a minimum sidewalk width requirement. Everyone else, everywhere else, it's kind of on a project-by-project basis. What this new plan does is that establishes minimum sidewalk standards for all the streets within this specific plan area. One of the goals was to make sure that we not only pushed a building back a little bit, but that we also widened the sidewalk in order to provide space for street trees, canopy street trees, big trees, right, so we can have shade in the future. And so that's reflected in what's included in the new plan. For example, along Arroyo, along the Arroyo corridor currently, there aren't any minimum sidewalk widths. As part of this new plan, when new development comes in, the minimum sidewalk width would be 15 feet. So it would allow ample space for pedestrian pathway, allow space for parkways and street trees. Another example is Green Street. Currently, the minimum sidewalk width is 10, and that was increased to 12 feet, and so that would provide an additional two feet for, you know, through a wider sidewalk pathway and hopefully more space for street trees. Within the historic corridors like Colorado and Lake, there weren't no changes proposed to the sidewalk widths because the idea is that if you're in a historic area, the buildings are not going to get demolished, the buildings are going to stay there, and so there's no need to change the minimum sidewalk widths. And this is a map of the minimum sidewalk width for Central District. And so another very important regulation that was included was parkways and street trees. Currently, in the 2004 plan, we don't require development to provide parkways, which is the landscaping strip that you see generally in residential neighborhoods, and street trees are not a requirement. We do, at a project-by-project basis, require street trees, but it's not an intentional plan that makes that requirement. In the new plan, new development would be required to not only widen the sidewalk, but they'll also be required to provide landscaped parkways and street trees. Street trees would need to be planted at every 30 feet. And there are other provisions, such as a type of trees that are allowed, well dimensions, and soil volume. This was very important because not only do you need to have the appropriate space for the tree to grow, but you need to make sure you have the appropriate soil as well in order to make sure that these trees survive and thrive. Another important... Another important standard that was included in the plan was with regards to open spaces within the private realm. There are three types of spaces that we looked at and that are included in the specific plan. You have private open space, which is the space that are for the individual residential use. So like if you have a unit, you usually have like a balcony or a private patio, that's what we consider private open space. Then you have common open space in residential buildings. Those are usually the pool houses, the courtyards that are accessible for the people that live in that building and that's shared within the tenants, so it's common. And then you have this new category, which is called publicly accessible open space. This is still on the private side, on the private development side, but it's more like a plaza or courtyard that's open to the public, and the public can use it as well. And I'll kind of provide some a little bit examples. It's a new standard in the plan, but it's not a new concept or idea. It's something that we visually saw throughout Central District, that we wanted to make sure that we included in the plan and made it a requirement because it's part of the character of Central District. And so a little bit more on the private and common open space for the residents. Again, currently, private and common open space requirements, it is a requirement today, but the amount of space is dependent on whether you're a mixed-use project or a residential-only project. And so there's a little bit of differences in terms of how much open space is required. What we felt was that developers were coming in and using mixed use, coming in as a mixed-use project, and they were providing less open space than if you're a residential project. And we felt, and what we heard from the community, that the amount of open space should not be based on whether it was mixed-use or residential, it should be based on the number of units, the number of tenants there. And so what the new plan does is that the amount of open space is based on the number of bedrooms per unit instead of the type of project. Majority of the open space that's required must be outdoor communal open space that's landscaped. There's also a requirement in the Central District-specific plan that says you need to plant canopy, large canopy trees within the project. Fifty percent of the trees that are planted in new development must be shade-type of trees, and the trees on the ground cannot be on pots. The idea was that we need larger trees within private development to provide shade and to provide areas for the residents to relax and enjoy those outdoor spaces. And we've really found that through COVID, that having the appropriate amount of outdoor space for residential buildings was very important, and so that's reflected in this specific plan because there was definitely a need. And moving forward, we feel that the number of open space that's required would provide that additional relief and outdoor spaces. Another type of open space is, what I mentioned, was the common open space. So these are the courtyards, the pool houses, sorry, this is for tenants, for commercial tenants, backtrack. The common open space for a commercial tenant, this is a new requirement. Currently, if you're a commercial project, you don't need to provide outdoor spaces for your tenants. Again, we found that outdoor space was important. It's not only important for residents, but it's also important for employees and the commercial tenants. And so projects of a certain size would have to provide common open space for their commercial tenants. Again, these are courtyards, it can be an outdoor dining lounge for their employees to have their break. We don't really necessarily say how that outdoor space should be used, but the plan requires a certain amount. It also requires trees to be planted, and again, trees are not allowed to be planted on pots. Again, the idea is that we want large trees within private development. Now, this concept of publicly accessible open space, there are no, currently, there are no requirements or standards for publicly accessible open space within the Central District Plan, but you see them everywhere in Central District. Publicly accessible open space are what you typically refer as a paseo. Those are kind of the pedestrian pathways that you see in Old Pasadena. So as you're walking on the public sidewalk, there's buildings, but then sometimes you cut through it through a pedestrian pathway. Those are paseos. You have many, many of them in Old Pasadena and in Central District. It's part of the character. And so we heard from the community, and we felt it was very important to make sure that any new development incorporate these paseos throughout Central District. And so projects of a certain size, typically projects that are relatively large in scale, would be required to provide a paseo or a plaza. And the amount of this publicly accessible space is depending on how large the project is. There are standards for how this publicly accessible open space should be landscaped, there's street tree, I mean, there's tree requirements. And again, on the map here, you see, you see existing pathways or paseos, although those solid green lines. So as you can see, there are many, many paseos already in Central. The idea was that any new development that's kind of next to an existing paseo or pathway, that it should connect. And so the dotted lines represent these opportunities where paseos would connect to existing ones. And these are just a few examples of the paseos or the publicly accessible open spaces that are found in Central. You know, some of them are just, again, pathways that have some public art components, that have landscaping benches, outdoor dining. Some of them are within residential projects. There's a paseos that you can use to cut through the public sidewalks. And so again, the idea was that this new Central District-specific plan will make it a requirement of new projects as they move forward. And I believe this is my last slide. Another key component of the plan was to create standards out of a bunch of design guidelines. The 2004 specific plan had many, many design guidelines with our subject to interpretation, they're subjective, and not only were we forced by the state to create these design guidelines into objective standards, but we really did hear from the community, the commission and council, that we really needed to create standards so that way developers, the community, the city, everyone knew what to expect when new development comes in. And so again, currently, there are, the current plan has development standards and many, many design guidelines that are subjective. And so part of our exercise was to create new standards that included some form-based elements, and the overall intent was that these standards would create walkable areas. It was very important that as Director Page mentioned, this is an area where it's dense, where we're going to encourage and support housing, mixed-use, commercial, retail. But we also wanted to make sure that we provided walkable pedestrian-friendly neighborhoods. And the other key component of the central plan was that we wanted to encourage traditional architectural elements that are found in Old Pasadena, and so we do have some provisions that encourage very detailed things like four-inch recessed windows. You see that in a lot of the traditional buildings. The use of brick or stone or specific materials was included in Central, which is very typical of an older building, and so we did hear from the community that they wanted that reflected in the plan, and that was included in the adopted plan. The image that you see on the screen is basically, represents how all the different standards that I just walked you through, setbacks, public open space, the use, stepback heights, how all those work together to kind of come up with a result that is pedestrian-friendly, that you have spaces to walk, that you have amenities, that the building relates to the street, to the human, and interacts with its surrounding neighborhood as well. And so that was the intent of the specific plan, and that was what was adopted by the City Council in October. And that concludes the presentation, so thank you. Okay, so the question is, how is a setback measured? The setback is measured from the property line. So you see where it says frontage zone? That's where the building kind of starts. Then you would have, imagine there's like an imaginary line somewhere in the frontage zone, that's kind of your property line. And so the setback is somewhere in between your property line and the building, and then after that, you have the sidewalk. I might have a better visual that shows that. Let me see. So it's measured, let's see this one now. No, this is, I don't think I have them. I don't, but I can share a figure, and then we can share with you.
Different diagrams, but, you know, typically, there's a property line, and then there's a building a setback a certain distance. And in Old Pasadena, where Anita was talking about, they're built right up to the property line because that's the way traditionally some of the older areas were developed. And when we say a five-foot setback, for example, so then you would have a property line, you'd have a five-foot example of, you know, of a space there, that the building is setback, that has to be landscaped, but you would have the sidewalk starting on the other side of that. So you combine the setback and the sidewalk, combine that together, and that gives you that distance between the street when you're walking. So if you had a ten-foot sidewalk and a five-foot setback, you'd have fifteen feet between the edge of the building and where the street is. And that's really, you know, when you're walking, you don't always know, where's the property line, where's the sidewalk, where's the setback? It combines into that whole space that Anita was showing there. So that would be a combination of your, that whole space together. That helps.
Thank you for coming up.
Yes, thank you very much. But first, before my question, I want to say kudos to the planning staff for an incredible job. I mean, this is a very, very complex area. They've worked through the issues very nicely, and I'm really pleased to see what they've done with the densities and the land uses and the design standards. So, and you should know, this hasn't actually been mentioned, but this plan was reviewed by the City Council in October and has been adopted, so it is now our policy for the Central District. So here is my question. As you know, I'm a member of the Complete Streets Coalition, which is an advocacy group that is very concerned to make, to reduce the dominance of automobiles on our streets and to make Pasadena a city that's consistent with our general plan, goal of making Pasadena a city where people can circulate without the use of a car. And at the City Council meeting at which the plan was reviewed, I was very pleased to see that among the council members, there was a very, very lively discussion about the public realm in the Central District. And what I heard anyway was a sense by the City Council members that, yeah, we just can't wait around for the developers to come in, you know, when they do a project, to improve our public realm. The city needs to be proactive in making, improving the design of our public spaces, and in particular, improving conditions for pedestrians. So my question to the staff is particularly based on that discussion, what are the staff's plans in terms of doing things like preparing, like an urban design plan for the public realm that would also include very careful consideration of the needs of pedestrians in the public realm, and especially quick improvements for the places that are most dangerous for pedestrians? And beyond that, what is staff thinking in terms of how some of the experience that was gained in Old Pasadena, which has been the success that it is because a huge public investment was made in the public realm there, the use of money from parking to go into the public spaces, and presence of a person who was like a placemaker who would force the members of the various departments to like actually talk to each other and coordinate their plans so that what resulted was something that was, you know, truly valuable, beautiful, and served the needs of the public. Anyway, sorry to go on, but those are my questions, and I'm wondering what staff is planning to do that is very, very specific to turn the public realm in the Central District into something, into a place that we can all really enjoy?
Thank you, Mr. Priestley. I want Jennifer and Anita to answer, but I just wanted to thank you for using the microphone so I don't have to repeat that question.
Thank you, Mr. Priestley. And, you know, Mr. Priestley was very active in a lot of our specific plan meetings for the Central District, and when I talked about that voice that came out and reminded us that there's people that live in the Central District and they have to cross the streets and they have to walk on the sidewalks, he was the advocate for that along with many others, so thank you for reminding us of that. And I think he hit on a key point, which is, in the planning department and in these specific plans, we regulate the private realm. We regulate private property. We don't have, we don't regulate what happens in the street, we don't regulate public improvements, but they affect one another, and you have to be aware of what's going on with both of those spaces and how they come together. And so our work on the specific plans, we weren't working in a bubble, and we weren't pretending that we weren't aware that, you know, the Department of Transportation and Public Works has master street tree plans and complete street plans. So we all worked interdepartmentally on the specific plans, and there's an implementation chapter. And so the implementation chapter calls out what all the other departments are doing that are part of the specific plan area. And so if you look at that chapter, it'll tell you some of these specific projects that are called out for and what the prioritization is. Is it something that's near-term, midterm, long-term? Is it funded or not? And that is to key off the conversation, which is the implementation part of this, and how are some of these changes going to be made? The changes on the private side are done by developers. When a developer comes in and they build a new project, that's when we say, here's your new rules that you have to follow, here's your setbacks, here's your open space. But in terms of what happens with changes to streetscapes and to the way lanes are striped in the road, and improvements like that, that's going to come on the public side. And so that's where the discussions with the City Council and the different commissions come in about funding and prioritizing. And so something that we're going to be doing new that we haven't done before is we're going to be doing an annual update at the Planning Commission where we report back on the specific plans, and we report back on what's been implemented and what hasn't. And that's really to have a public discussion for the community on what you think should be prioritized, and then we will forward that on to the City Council. So if we're hearing at that meeting that there's some improvements that maybe matter to people, then we can pass that along, and the decision-makers could decide how that could be funded. It might be through the CIP or through grants or other types of programs, but the money has to be there in order to make some of those improvements. But we're aware of all of those programs, and we work together, and it's going to be a group effort to make sure that all that gets done.
Looks like we have another question, but I want to just add something, maybe widen the aperture a little bit on that. You know, the difficulty from the council's perspective is, we're not planning for today so much as we are for the future, ten, twenty, thirty years. When these projects are built, they're going to be there for a long time. So what does that look like in terms of what the future needs and requirements will be? You know, there's an emphasis now on charging stations for electronic vehicles because clearly we're moving toward that. Pretty much every automaker now is offering electric vehicles in California. If the current law stays put, in 2035, it will, it will no longer be, it won't be lawful to sell a combustion engine vehicle. I would also observe that my sense of the city manager and the team that he's assembled is that it is a very cohesive group at the, what we call the executive committee, the department heads of the city who work together, and there seems to be a lot of crosswalking going on, which is to our benefit as residents. Please come on up and...
My name is Michael McConnell. I'm a resident of District Six on Euclid Avenue. It's my first time attending one of these things, so I'm very impressed with how you guys put this together, and fantastic job on the plan, by the way. I just had a couple of questions regarding some simple things, like on this slide, actually, you mentioned tree species. Is there any consideration given to tree genders and how those are selected within the developments, just for the abatement of pollen in the air and so forth?
I know, I can say to start that... I know, I can say to start that we've had some misses over the years on that, thinking about the ficus trees in the Playhouse District, for example.
Yeah, yeah. The impacts that it has on sidewalks, of course, you know, magnolia trees being so thirsty, that sort of thing.
And, you know, the root structures, I think, are mentioned here on that last bullet point. We do have a city arborist, and we do pay quite a bit of attention to trees in Pasadena. So it might not be exactly in Anita or Jennifer's lane, as it were, but if you have anything to add, please.
Yeah, I was just asking Anita, because part of the work that, the background work that we did for the plans is we, our consultants had arborists on staff that made recommendations for, which is essentially a blueprint. So when the Public Works Department comes and updates the master street tree plan, they'll be able to pull the specific plan and look at the blueprint that was already laid out in terms of recommendations for trees by an arborist. So it does look at climate, it looks at the built environment, really what would thrive there, given the buildings that are there now, instead of what was planted 30, 40, or 50 years ago. And it looks at climate and, you know, shade trees. And so we've essentially set the blueprint, that's part of what was adopted. And so now the Public Works Department can, when they get to an area that's in the Central District specific plan, and this goes for all of our plan areas, they'll be able to pull that work and then base their street tree plan updates on that. So we do have arborists that were professional arborists. That's not something that is our bailiwick, so we have to bring in the experts on that. But that's where we all work together, and then Public Works knows that we're doing that work, and so we've started it for them. So they're going to be updating the master street tree plan in the near future, so they'll start looking at the blueprint that we've set with the specific plans.
Kind of dovetailing off of that, I had a question about, you know, this might be beyond the scope of, you know, what you focused on here is all new development and improvements and so forth within the Central District. But I'm curious to know if there's efforts underway to make more improvements in the sidewalks of Pasadena in Central District, because as somebody who uses them every day, I find that, you know, we need a mass overhaul of sidewalks.
Yeah.
It's bad.
It's under, it's under the purview of the Public Works Department, but there is a streets and sidewalks plan, and so there's a master plan for that as well that looks at when those would be placed. And then, again, through the blueprint that we're laying in terms of the new width for the sidewalks, that's when some of that would be implemented. So that is being planned for under the Public Works Department.
On that point, this is definitely something the City Council is cognizant of. And, you know, I'm a lawyer by day, and so one of the things I read is every single claim that comes into the city for liability. Every week, we probably get 10, 15, 20 claims, and we get a fair share of slip and fall claims. And everybody talks about, well, liability, we don't want the liability. Well, first and foremost, we don't want anybody to hurt themselves. You know, it's painful to break your ankle, and we don't want that to happen. But, you know, economics is the science of human choice in a world of limited resources. And we have well over a billion dollars of capital projects on the books, and a small fraction of that every year. We have looked at redeploying funds to try to just fix all the sidewalks in the city in one fell swoop, and that hasn't gotten sort of political support for obvious reasons, right? There are other very worthy projects that are on that list. But we are, we do do it, we are doing it. And if you are aware of a particularly bad area, let us know. And I probably shouldn't say this as a fiduciary of the city, but I actually do want to say it, that if we're on notice about it, then we can take action and get it fixed sooner than a sort of a complete overhaul of the neighborhood or the street.
I will definitely follow up with you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And lastly, I just wanted to add, you know, I know this interdepartmental relationships and so forth being what they are for this planning purpose, you know, with regard to quality of life in the plan, it seems very focused on, you know, having a great quality of life for Pasadena residents with these developments, you know, paseos and so forth. Is consideration given to things like the effects of, you know, say 5G that are being implemented in residential areas now? I sent an email to your office, Steve, regarding 5G being built on Euclid with Verizon, and I'm disappointed that there was no more public notice given to those of us on Euclid about this, other than an eight-by-eleven sheet of paper stuck on a pole, you know? And that went missing for several months and only just reappeared. So I want to make sure that, you know, this is all great, but if we're blanketed with 5G waves, and as a network engineer, I can speak to that a little bit myself, I think that it's something to be concerned about, and especially in residential neighborhoods. That's all I had.
So again, I would respond to that by saying, this is sort of what I was alluding to earlier about predicting what the future looks like, what are the needs and requirements going to be in the area of cell towers, which is what you're speaking of. The cities actually have very little authority. Congress has pretty much preempted almost all local regulation, because many people feel, as you apparently do, that there are health risks. And at the federal level, the policy judgment has been made that that is not the case. And I'm not endorsing any opinion there, just, it's very frustrating. And I don't know if that's part of the wave of applications that we're dealing with right now for the, for cell towers, but we managed to sort of get that to stop. They withdrew the application, and we're now, we're sitting down with them and trying to address the needs and whatever, you know, muscularity we do have to protect our community from, you know, just being overwhelmed.
One follow-up on that. I've noticed that other municipalities in particular, I believe it's Monterey, California, maybe even Agora Hills or Calabasas area, they have instituted regulations about how far these small cell sites, which are, you know, a convenient turn of phrase to get away from the term "cell tower" and have something smaller that seems less impactful, and how far those can be from residential neighborhoods and schools. So they've actually implemented policy in those municipalities to prevent those things from being within 500 yards or 1,000 yards, that sort of thing. So I'm just wondering if Pasadena is taking those steps as well.
We'll definitely look into that, but my understanding is we'd be preempted from those regulations if challenged because of federal preemption, but we'll definitely look at that. Mr. Brata, you have a question this evening? It's great to see you, Mark. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, forgive me, my wife said to be nice, this is a short preamble. I live on Bradford, have business on Bellevue, so I'm concerned with all this stuff, especially the freeway. Regarding that, Walnut Street with the condos is like a canyon. The density is, to me, is absurd, I don't know how everybody else feels about it. State mandates you have to have, what, 9,400 units in the next eight years? Is that correct? Why cannot the city say, we've got the 50 acres of the freeway stubs, and use that as an alternative or as our design plan for the next, you know, 15, 20 years? That's it.
So what Mark's speaking about is what we call RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, which is the state's direction to us that we have to accommodate regional growth by allowing in our zoning code. We don't have to build the units, and they don't have to be built, but we have to allow for a certain number of net new residential units. And that's just now one of a host of state mandates in this area. If the, if the sort of suggestion is that we use the freeway stump to build, you know, sort of a lot of density, that may be something that'll be discussed as part of the process of revisioning for that. I'd be surprised if that would get, you know, widespread support. I think, you know, you have people that want open space there, you have people that want commercial, you know, some commercial, single-family homes will be competing, you know, for space there.
I understand, but you've got 50 acres, you don't have to be that dense, or not physically or mentally, but...
I've been called worse, believe me. Probably by you, Mark, I've been called worse, yeah. But I want to encourage that kind of discussion in the 7-10 discussions as we go forward. Yeah, and what a unique opportunity with, you know, 48 or 50 acres, a city like Pasadena that's fully built out. Now we've got like a whole small town that we get to build from scratch, so I'm really excited about it. Yeah. I thought I saw a hand, but yes, do you want to come up or just?
Not really.
Fine. So the question's about parking, and some communities are trying to eliminate parking altogether for new developments. What are we doing, Jennifer?
So there was a state law that was passed in January that, so there's, that preempted some of our work, and it basically said for new projects coming in within your certain distance of major transit stops and corridors, we can't require new parking. So that's already a state law. What we're finding, though, is that most developers still want to provide parking. We actually haven't had anybody ask to do that yet for residential or commercial projects. They're finding that they still need to provide some type of onsite parking for their tenants or the users of the building. So we haven't seen that law taken advantage of, but there's a state law. Through this specific plan efforts, we're generally lowering the parking requirements, not dramatically, but we're trending down to lowering the parking requirements, getting out to what Councilmember Madison was talking about in terms of excess parking and really looking at parking and how it's used, and the trend is that we don't need as much parking as we've had in the past. And so we've made adjustments and lowered a lot of our parking ratios, or we've made them the same. Our zoning code is 25 years old, so after we finish updating all the specific plans, we're going to update our zoning code. And so 25 years ago, every use had a different parking requirement, and when you switched from one use to another use, you had to make up the parking, and it was very difficult. And so we realized that, you know, the difference between a bakery and a hair salon, they probably park the same. And so we've done a lot of combining uses and simplified it, and then generally lowered them a bit. The transit-oriented development, the TOD areas that are within a quarter mile of a A-line station, those automatically have built-in reductions, and those were already in the code, and we kept those the same. So those, because if you're near transit, then you should be encouraging that people are parking and then walking to their destination. So we already had that built in, we're a bit ahead of the curve on that. So we didn't make any adjustments in the specific plans for that.
I don't know if anybody remembers, there was an LA City Council member years ago named Mike Wu, and he ran for mayor and then finished second in that race. And so then he went into a business that was probably before its time, where it was like car sharing, the idea that you don't own your own car, but you are part of a consortium of people that can just, there's a car always there to use, but it's not, you know, when you're not using it, it's not your sort of thing. We have such an interesting relationship with our cars, though, I think especially in California, you know, they're ours and we want them. And I agree, I don't think the market is there broadly yet for, for example, residential units without a parking space. I think that would impede the ability of the developer to realize a return on investment. So, but who knows what the future holds, you know? So, okay, yes.
I have a question. I'll walk along.
So the question's about walking, which is a good, healthy, positive thing to do, and the intersections where it seems unduly long.
Yeah, I mean, there's some...
Yeah. Well, I would say with regard to the gold line, the cars complain about that, too, about the waiting, you know? Because when that was built, we were told that the, you know, crossings of the trains would be sort of magically subsumed by the 1,500 red light cycles, and the engineers kind of patted us on the head, and of course, that was not true, and we knew it wasn't going to be true. It's a difficult problem. You know, we looked seriously at taking the California and Arroyo crossing and putting it either above or below grade, but that would cost hundreds of millions of dollars and probably result in no access for, you know, five, six years or more. So that got scrapped. I would say, you know, if you go to Old Pasadena, for example, those diagonal crossings, I don't know if you're a fan, I am as well. Of course, then the problem is, there's always the person that, it's for the cars only to go, and it says, "Don't walk," but they walk anyway. So then, you know, that's a problem. But I think we, well, I'll mention that to the Transportation Department, that would be Transportation's bailiwick, and...
Yeah, just keep us in mind.
Absolutely. Always. Okay, in fact, walking's here now, yeah. You're walking up, or you, you'll never have to prove your courage in any other way. Thank you for being here, though. Any other questions? I want to get to our raffle and not keep you too late here. No? Well, I'll stick around afterwards if you have questions for me about anything that's happening in the city. Can we thank Anita and Jennifer very much again? And as we're preparing for the raffle, I also want to thank Rachel and Whitney from Public Health, so perfect timing, yeah. Thank you. And Danny Hess and Charles Winters from Pasadena Media, who always are so great about filming and broadcasting. And again, a big shout out to Michelle McGraw and her colleague Lauren Hamlet. I don't know if they're still here. Thank you so much. Thank you, Lauren. And our great police, Edgar Sanchez actually is our new area commander for the area that serves most of our district, so we're grateful for that. And Chad Augustine, who always reminds me that I need to get to the gym when I see him.